Waterloo Telecommunications Utility Board. And he was basically saying, I don't think it's going to be that challenging. And boy, did he sell me on that one. So we met in Lincoln Park in July of 2019. And he shared with me a manila envelope, a file of like all of the historical perspectives from 2005 onward. And there was information in there from Doris Kelly. There was information in there about the Telecom Board and lots of things that they had tried to accomplish, but just didn't go anywhere. And he said, you know, you had to bring fiber to your building. So I had to bring fiber to my building in order to get a tenant. And he said, just do that, but at the citywide level, which seemed pretty easy at the time, right? So he asked me to take it on. And so I agreed, obviously. And our first meeting was here and it was five minutes long. I remember Wendy Bowman sitting back here and Kelly was here too. And we didn't have anything to discuss because we were just reigniting the Waterloo Telecommunications Utility, which had really sat dormant for about 15 years. The citizens of Waterloo wanted it. They voted for that in 2005, but it did sit dormant for various reasons. And I'm happy to, obviously, to be where we're at with Waterloo Fiber. So my first step was to reengage the board. So we have, at that time, Sharon Juon was our city council liaison. Rob has taken that position, which we appreciate your involvement in the board. And on our board is Mike Young, Amy Weenens, Rich Kurtenbach and Teddy Bateman. So just to give you an idea of how much energy has gone into getting to where we're at, I have about 2,000 volunteer hours myself on this project, about 500 hours per year as a volunteer. And it's because I believe in the betterment of Waterloo through this fiber initiative. But the board has also worked extremely hard and other people in our wake have also worked really hard. Sharon Juon, Randy Pilkington, a lot of people have worked really hard to get to the position that we're at. And so it couldn't be possible without their help and to work through the difficulties of trying to stand up a private or a public utility. Our first big steps were to do a survey to the citizens of Waterloo to see, do you still want this? And resounding, yes, they still wanted their own public utility. So then we set off to hire a consultant. And that's no small feat when you're partnering with a consultant to try to understand who's going to help pave the way, who's going to be our partner in success with this. So we vetted about five or six different consulting firms. And the one that we selected was Magellan, which is now in trust. And what was impressive about them was that their CEO and their COO took the call. And I remember as we were evaluating them, they had done lots of similar projects around the nation and we felt most comfortable with them and we did engage with them. And they've been our partner for about five years. Courtney is their COO, Courtney Violet, and he's been involved in the project from day one. So we're really in good hands. So then after hiring the consultant, what came into play was, is this going to be a public entity by itself or should this be a public-private entity? Ultimately, we decided that this is going to be best to be a public entity, no public-private partnership. However, we did have some interest from private companies that jumped on their fancy jets and came to Waterloo and they validated our opportunity. I won't say who it was, but guess what? When they came here, it said to us, to the board, geez, you guys flew over Waterloo for so many times and now you want to stop here. That's because of that there's a significant opportunity. That was very validating for us. And so after a lot of different discussions, we decided this public, the public utility is the way to go. And I remember sitting right there with Sharon Juon. And as we were trying to evaluate this, she said to me, what do you think about a public utility? And I said, I'm not there yet in terms of, I can't make that decision quite yet. We need to be more educated on this. And her response was, don't you want to keep all of that profit in Waterloo? Do you think, do you realize what we can do with all that profit in Waterloo? And the light bulb went off for me. That was probably in the first year. And the light bulb went off for me because not many utilities can operate profitably. However, this telecommunications utility can turn a profit. Our attorneys don't like to say profit, they call it surplus, which is a whole nother story. But the surplus or profit from the utility can be used for other initiatives in Waterloo, which is extremely exciting. You don't have to look very far to see a very successful model of this right next door. So again, we made the decision to go into a public utility. And then we spent hours and hours with legal teams. You can imagine how difficult it is to stand up a public utility and working through the nuances, both insignificant seeming and significant seeming. The hours and hours of dialogue with legal to get to this point has been significant. And again, Magellan consultants led us through the way. But then there was a lot of financing pieces to it. Okay. So obviously, this is a significant project for the city of Waterloo. As we're working through all these nuances with Magellan and with legal team and financing, COVID hit. And while it slowed us down, it was actually a blessing because we were able to start exploring some funding. You know, this is basically $120 million project and we were able to get $30 million of grant funding between the ARPA American Rescue Plan Act dollars and the EDA grant, which helps when we get to the pricing part of the presentation that Eric will share with you. So that really helped us a lot in terms of the funding parts of it. But I'll just talk through a little bit about the bid process. Initially, the bids that were going to come in were in relation to an RFP that had certain aspects of it that we weren't very comfortable with. So for instance, they had 13,000 pedestals planned in their, in the RFP. Now a pedestal, one pedestal would access two homes. So 13,000 of those really ugly army green cylinders in the city of Waterloo, not on my watch. So we rejected all these bids, but here are some of the reasons why. The pedestals were in there, the critical crossing was going to go under the river instead of going through conduit under the bridges. That was going to be a $2 million add. Going from the pedestals to a vault, which is what we ultimately have done, was going to be about a $7 million add. And we could save some money on the critical crossing. But what was interesting, everybody saw each other's bids. Everybody sharpened their pencils and they started to do some value engineering, which is pretty significant. So we really ended up saving a significant amount of money from the initial bids and we got everything we wanted. We went from pedestals to vaults, the critical crossing under the river. While it would have been nice to have, it's not worth $2 million to go under, to bore under the river and get Army Corps of Engineering involved and everything like that. So instead, we went, you know, under, under the bridge or we're going under the bridge to the conduit. And then other value engineering items is what they called it. But so you can see that, you know, being stewards of the finances of this community, wanting to make sure that we're getting every value that we can out of this project and making sure that also beautifies the city at the same time. So low and behold, the bids came in lower with all of our required additions. To give you an idea of how much the board has done in the last year, and Kelly, thank you for putting this together. Last year, we did 117 resolutions, is that right? Something along those lines. And we met every two weeks, you know, probably for the last two years, we've met every two weeks because this is such a significant lift to get to where we're at. So we had about 25 meetings last year. Again, we're a volunteer board. CFU has been profitable for quite some time. They do pay their board, you know, nominal stipend, but we are a volunteer board. Kelly and Eric can attest to this, again, being stewards of finances. I always ask for a three to 5% discount, no matter what we're bidding on or what, you know, what is coming our way. And I can say, we're a startup, right? I could say that for a long time, that we are a startup and we were getting those discounts. And Eric will share some information as well as to where we're at, spend to date. So I'll finish on this and I'll turn it over to Eric. But here's why I'm involved. Really, there's nothing in it for me, other than I want to see a more attractive Waterloo. We don't have mountains and oceans to attract, to attract people to Waterloo. But this is world-class broadband, fiber broadband internet that's being brought to Waterloo to the tune of 10 gigs. That is incredibly, for $109 for a resident, it's unheard of. I talked to one of the guys that was in our front yard from ITG after they came through our neighborhood and I just happened to be working out in the garage. And he said, did our guys make this mess in your yard? And I said, I don't know if it was the snowplower, if it was your guys. He goes, I'm going to have the guys come and put some seed down. We're going to take care of it, make it look nice. So I got to talking to him. He didn't know me from Adam. Got to talking with him and he said, look, I live in Waverly and this is enough to make me move to Waterloo because I want to be a part of this. Because, he said, I'm a big video gamer, my wife hates that. But he goes, people that have 10 gig at a resident for $109 is unheard of. He said, even a gig for $69.95 is unheard of. That's even cheaper than CFU, right? And we're a startup. So while we don't have mountains and oceans, we will have world-class fiber internet here that will be used, it can be used as an economic development tool. We can attract remote workers, businesses and retain them as well. I also have a friend of mine who has a fintech startup that he's in, he's in Colorado, but he sold a couple of successful businesses. And in response to LinkedIn post about Waterloo Fiber, his comment was, commercial values in Waterloo just doubled. He's that convinced that this infrastructure will help to increase values and attract people here. Second to last bullet point is, is that we deserve better. For far too long, the incumbents have really been providing poor service, poor quality, high prices. We are doing a lot better by providing locally owned and operated fiber internet, lower cost, we're providing jobs in the Cedar Valley and it will be used as an economic development tool. And last point is, obviously, it's going to be less expensive, higher quality and locally serviced. And I love this part, when you call to get service or when you call if you have a technical disruption, you're going to be calling down here. You're not going to get offshore, you're going to be calling downtown. You're going to connect with somebody who may, you may know or your kids may know each other. And they're not going to say, we'll be there two weeks from Tuesday from between eight and four. It's going to be much more friendlier in terms of customer service than that. And the last point is, at the end of the day, all this hard work is going to be expected. Like the work that we've put into it will be no different than when you turn on your faucet and you expect water. So I've told Eric and team, while we're doing a hell of a lot of significant heavy lifting, it's going to be expected. When people get connected and they get hooked up to fiber, Waterloo fiber, it's going to be like, yeah, it always should have been there. But I just wanted to share with you the journey and how much work has gone in to get to the point that we're at. So I'll turn it over to Eric, any questions for me?
Counsel? Not yet.
Okay, I'll be around.
Thank you. All righty, we're all set. Eric Loggie, General Manager for Waterloo Fiber. Appreciate the opportunity to come talk to you about Waterloo Fiber. Whoops. Oh yeah, okay. Yeah, any opportunity we get to talk about the things we're doing, we get really excited. So I just have a few slides here, kind of talks about the operations, where we're at. So I'll just dive into it here. So a little history, which I'm sure you're all familiar with. Waterloo Fiber was actually established all the way back in 2005, which was nearly 20 years ago. As Andy said, 2019, he was engaged by Randy Pilkington to start serving on the board. And thankfully, I think we got the right people in the right seats on that board to really take some initiative and propel the project forward. 2020, COVID-19 exposes serious need for improved broadband. As we all know, remote learning, work from home, you know, this was already a huge priority for Waterloo and a huge need. And COVID-19 just, I think, put it right over the top. 2022, the $20 million GO bond referendum passes, 84% by Waterloo voters. And then 2023, we did our staffing, we did our groundbreaking, which you can see, who do we got? Andy, John, the mayor, a couple more board members, Rob, you're in there at the groundbreaking. And then shortly after that, construction began. And then at the end of 2023, we brought in our first four test customers right before Christmas. So that was very exciting. So what's the vision? So when I was thinking about, you know, kind of how to present this, I wanted to take a step back and really what was not only like our board's vision, what's the mayor and the council's vision, but what was Waterloo's vision when they voted this into existence? What was the vision of the public when they voted for the GO bond? And so I think pretty front and center is broadband equity, ensuring that every single person in Waterloo has the opportunity to connect to affordable, high-speed and reliable internet. Also local service, Andy mentioned it, but you know, you're going to be able to call into Waterloo Fiber and actually speak to a human being right here in Waterloo. I mean, that's huge. You're not going to have to dread calling into your current, or like you probably do with your current provider. And also your dollars stay local. They're not going to get shipped off to, you know, stakeholders or shareholders 1,000 miles away. When you pay your Waterloo bill, those dollars stay right here in Waterloo. And we're here for Waterloo. We're all local to this city. Our board is local and we're all just wanting to do what the right or the best thing is for our community. Affordable, so we want obviously to make this accessible and affordable for everybody. 100 meg service starting at $29.95 is pretty unheard of and so is a gig for $69.95. Extremely competitive and it's completely transparent. So you can go right to our website and see our standard rates. Those aren't promotional rates, they're standard rates. And also no rate hikes or hidden fees, no fine print to read through. You know, I think there should be an expectation that, you know, when you're looking at pricing for internet or for telecom service, you know, if you see $29.95, that's what it costs. So that's what we're going to achieve. This is a significant investment and we're making sure that we're doing it to the highest quality. So we're doing 100% fiber to the home. It's not a hybrid of fiber coax or fiber and wireless, it's 100% fiber right to your door. 42-inch deep construction, that was one of the things that Andy was talking about when the bids for the RFP, you know, we wanted to make sure that the deeper that our lines go, the less chance of disruption from other providers or other whoever digging into our lines, the deeper the better. Redundant connections, right now, we are connected up with CFU as an upstream provider, but we're also looking at several other providers to create some redundancy. If one provider goes down, the other providers will take over. And then we're using high-quality equipment. We're not cutting corners to save, you know, a dollar here, a dollar there. Everything was specked out as being a very high-quality investment. XGS pond, so this is the technology that we're deploying. XGS stands for 10-gig symmetrical, which means that this will do up to 10 gigs up and 10 gigs down, which is just insane, 10 gig to your door. Delivered right to your home or business. Economic development is another pretty big part of the vision. Andy mentioned, I think you mentioned remote, like remote, remote work. So, you know, Waterloo is going to have affordable housing, low cost of living and world-class broadband. That's just like a dream for any remote worker looking to relocate. Also will help to track businesses. Not to brag, but we're going to be the largest utility, public utility in Iowa, over 30,000 passings. So I joke, it's like, not to brag, but it's also, you have to think about the significance of what we're doing. Creating the largest broadband network, public broadband network in Iowa is, it's something to really be proud of. And then community ROI. Also, as Andy stated, you know, Waterloo Fiber is going to be in a unique position that when we become profitable or surplus-able, we can reinvest any surplus funds in the Waterloo. That could be beautifying a park or donating to a local event or renovating a public facility. You know, we'll be able, the board will be able to dictate what happens to some of those surplus funds and reinvest them in our community. Funding sources, this is an important one. So the project is a mixture of grant money and bonds. So starting off, we have ARPA, I think about $25 million. That's for fiber to the premise and backbone construction. EDA, which is Economic Development Administration, that's just for backbone only. I think it's about $1.8 million. And then there's a $600,000 match through TIF. GO bond, that's our $20 million bond that got voted into 2022. That's for fiber to the premise and backbone, will probably be split about 50/50. The utility portion of that will be repaid with utility revenue. And very good news, a few weeks ago, we found out that the funding came in about, the rate came in about 1% less than the projection. So it was estimated at 5% and it was secured at just a hair over 4%. And also attracted nationwide attention for funding. We had several institutions that were interested and we had, you know, we only needed $20 million, but we had, I think the aggregate of all of our options was about 70 million. So that's pretty cool. Utility revenue bonds, that will be pretty much the remainder of the utilities portion of the project, about $60 million. Those are all repaid with utility revenue. And then Waterworks and Sewer Revenue Bonds will take up the remainder of the backbone. So I think between the two of them, it's about $10 million. So we're thankful to Waterworks for their contribution and then those Sewer Revenue Bonds as well. So the budget, so the projected budget, this is on construction only, but the projected budget was $85 million. The bid actuals were about $77.8 million. And as Andy stated, we were able to rebid that out, go to pedestals or go to vaults instead of pedestals to clean up the aesthetics and came in well under our projected budget. Then we have a net change order of negative 3.4 million. In other words, that's $3.4 million in cost-saving change orders. About 500,000 of that is a deduction from the contract for the La Porte Road project. So that gets deducted out of this contract and then later will be rebid out under that La Porte Road project. So we're under budget, about $11.2 million as of today. So that's good news, right? As you know, this is a three-phase project. If you can see, the southern portion there is phase one, the northeast portion is phase two and the northwest portion is phase three. This is phase one. So right now, we're in four task orders within this phase. So the light blue, the purple and the light and dark green is where we are right now doing construction. The light green is going to be the first area to get released here, hopefully fairly, fairly soon. Phase two here, so northeast portion of Waterloo, if you see that star, that was the original plan for placing our phase two point of presence or our fiber hut. We've since decided to move that due to some concerns over lightning strikes. So that'll probably end up moving a little bit east from where it's at there on the map. And then phase three, 2026, again, where that star is for the huts. There were some concerns over being too close to a flood plain, so we're going to move that a little bit closer to 63. Current progress on construction, so today, ITG has 13 drill crews, three fiber pulling crews, 11 spicers or 11 splice crews. And we have construction going in various stages of construction and four different task orders of phase one. And looking at it today, we're approximately five weeks ahead of schedule for phase one. This is just a cool slide. Our first phase one hut was delivered late in 2023. It's at the corner of Ridgeway in Ainsborough there at Fire Station Six. This houses all of the equipment necessary to run phase one. Fun fact, it weighed 25 tons, they brought it in with a crane, it was quite a production. And we were about $40,000 under budget on that fiber hut. Huts two and three will be a little bit smaller footprint, a little bit smaller because they house less electronics. And those will get placed in early 2025 and early 2026 respectively. Services coming soon. So initially, when we launch, we're going to launch with internet only, but we do have voice and video service coming later in 2024 with voice or telephone service. We're partnering with Iman out of Cedar Rapids. Iman's a private company, but they're very, very friendly with municipal utilities. They service plenty of other municipal utilities with wholesale voice. Our residential voice service is about 20 or is $20 per line. Business voice line will be $50 and then we'll have the ability to do custom services like hosted SIP trunks, toll-free service, whatever a commercial customer would need. Then on video service, we're partnering with CFU and seven other municipal utilities. CFU has, they built a pretty state-of-the-art IPTV headend. And these other municipal utilities under a 28E have bought in shares of that headend. So we actually own about 40%. We're the largest shareholder of that headend that sits there in Cedar Falls. And we're able to do that and save, you know, presumably 40% of what it would cost to just build it ourselves. So, and 40% of the maintenance going forward. So we're very lucky to be close to CFU and able to utilize that IP headend. The video product will be basically just a streaming app. So you can go on your Roku or your Fire Stick, look for the Waterloo Fiber app, download it and you'll have our cable. Then we'll have multiple packages available for that. Operations and marketing, so talking about drops and installs. So a drop is what we call when you bring the fiber in from the curb or the box at the curb up to your house. So we have tests, six test customers today. Then we have several more we're going to be bringing on over the next few weeks here. And we're testing for workflows, billing, ticketing system, technical performance, you know, is the speed right, is it performing the way it should? Then the customer service or the customer journey and the timing. So when you go up to sign up for service, what does the timing look like for installing the drop, for scheduling installation, et cetera? Getting all that perfect before we go live later this summer. Marketing, we have a brand new website that just launched last week. So if you go to WaterlooFiber.com, it looks totally different. So be sure to check that out. There's a demand aggregation feature in there. So basically, anybody can go on, they can put in their address, put in their name, their contact info, get updates on Waterloo Fiber. And then when service becomes available in your area, you'll get notified. And then if a area has been released for installs, you'll be able to go on, you'll be able to sign up for service. And if you don't want to call into our local customer support, then you can just go on there and schedule your own install, which is pretty cool. So, and even if you want to change service, so if Rob here wants to go from 300 meg up to a gig, he can just log into his account, upgrade it and then boom, he's upgraded. So also you'll be able to do online bill pay through there too. Community involvement, we've been doing a lot of speaking with civic groups. We've gone to ward meetings, at-large meetings, attending community events. We were just at my Waterloo days in the parade and at that event. And then other social media or other marketing things, we're doing a really good job on social media. We have a great presence there. We do weekly posts about where the crews are. So you can go on our Facebook page, see where the crews are for that week. Yard signs, if anybody in the public wants a yard sign to kind of show their support for the utility, we have plenty of yard signs, we'll come put one in your yard. When we're ready to go live, we're going to do door-to-door sales. We have some interns who have peddler's permits and we're going to go out and get the word out door-to-door when we release our areas for service. And then we're doing some media campaigns and we even have some commercials out there. And then other operational stuff, today, we have seven employees and we're hiring for a few positions actively right now. And then right now, we're working on our finance, payroll, HR, operations, billing and ticketing systems, all at the same time. So the team's been putting in some long hours getting all that implemented. Last slide here, why Waterloo Fiber? Just to recap, 100% fiber to the home, straight to your door, up to 10 gig. Reliable, we're doing quality construction, we're building a quality network. Affordable, our plans start at under 20 or under $30 per month. No hidden fees and we're going to reach every residence and business in Waterloo. Everyone's going to have an opportunity to have this. And local support, call into Waterloo Fiber and talk to somebody local. So. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Eric. Counselor, questions, comments? I know we had a meeting a couple of months ago and you wanted an update on what's happening, so. Thoughts? Yes, sir.
I just had a couple of questions. On the surplus funds, as you call it, how many customers do we need to get on board before we can theoretically see a surplus?
Before we see a surplus?
I mean, we've got to pay a lot of, a lot of debt.
Right, yeah, there's some projected take rates that were, on advice of our council, we're keeping those proprietary, so. But I mean, in my opinion, those are easily attainable numbers, I would say.
And then, you know, like, one of your competitors that's putting a lot of fiber in the ground, they're signing up residents with no, with no contract, but they're signing up commercial and businesses with contracts. And my fear is that when people sign up for three years with this other company and can't get out, it just prolongs our ability to, to meet those customer needs.
Certainly extent, I think a lot of businesses are also very leery of signing those long-term contracts. So, you know, I know a few who have, but many that I've talked to said, hey, they came to me with this, you know, multi-year contract and it wasn't for me, so I feel good about it.
So will, will our commercial contracts be multi-year or will they be month by month? How are we planning, going to structure that?
So any, any commercial installation that is above something what you would call like a standard install, for getting something very custom, that includes, that involves a large capital expense upfront, they probably would have some sort of a contract just so we can capture back that investment. Just a standard, you know, small and medium business will not have a contract.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Well, thank you guys. This is something that I've been really excited about for a very long time. As you probably know, I'm not from Iowa, I'm from Virginia originally. And I originally, you know, I went to UNY and when I lived in Cedar Falls, because I went to UNY, I had CFU and it was really good. And then I was like, I want to be in Waterloo, so I moved to Waterloo and then the internet was not so good. So this is a really big thing that we've needed for a long time. And Waterloo needs to be a cool city with cool things and this is how we get there. So I just had a few questions, so how are the test customers doing?
Good. From a technical perspective, we've maybe had a couple of very, very minor issues that we were able to fix like that, which is why we test. But yeah, overwhelmingly very, very good and very happy.
Great. Something that was in one of your prior agendas, is this still true that there will be a trial period for?
Yeah, I didn't include that, I was thinking about that after I already emailed out the slide. But yeah, so we do have a promo, it's two months free for internet only, so. Yeah, I mean, if you take, you know, if you're looking for gig service, that's $140 almost of value.
I'm going for 10, yep, we're going for 10. So just lastly, Sharon and I used to talk a lot about this particular thing. And I remember right around the eve of the election, her and I sitting in her kitchen just talking about the amazing things that are going to happen in Waterloo. And one of the things that, I can't remember the exact words, so I don't want to exactly quote what she said, but pretty much that this was necessary for our future. And to hear that a commercial person has said that, I really hope that comes true, that our values get doubled because that would be absolutely amazing. These prices are amazing, my in-laws that moved from Virginia have been waiting for this. They, they said no to the other company that approached them and they're waiting for this as well. This is going to make a big difference. President Obama came and this is in his book, speaking about what happened at CFU. So hopefully we can get a president here talking about what's happening in Waterloo. Great work, guys, I look forward to this, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I just wanted to echo off John and say, it's been a pleasure being on the telecom board. Andy, your leadership has been amazing. Maggie, it's been great having your, your insight. And Eric, glad to have you part of our team and lead us, lead us in the future. This is going to be great for all of our residents in Waterloo because we're hitting every building.
Thank you.
All right, so thank you so much for the update. The telecom meetings are televised, so if anyone's watching, you can definitely go ahead and take a look. Want to say, Eric, thank you for stepping in, thank you for your leadership. And I have to make sure that Andy and I, we've done 6:00 AM runs in the mornings, talking about how we can move things forward. I'm not doing the 6:00 AM runs anymore, but we want to thank you because, you know, you, you didn't get paid to do this, but you believed enough in this that it will make a difference for our future. So we thank you and the telecom board, we thank Spear for its leadership and all of our city staff too, that has played a role to get to this point. And really fortunate for our consultants and stuff like that as well because it's not easy going from zero to getting to the point we're at right now. So we appreciate all those efforts and look forward to what's to come in the future with this. And counsel, thank you so much for the years of your support for this as well. This is a game changer for us, so.
Motion to adjourn?
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn, second all in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.